Okay, so you'll take your.
The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, January 10, 2017. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight with praise and thanksgiving on our heart. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for the rain that you are providing. And Heavenly Father, we just ask that you protect those that are in the flood plains, Heavenly Father. Be with those, Heavenly Father Jesus, that their homes are inundated with water. We just pray, Heavenly Father Jesus, that it will be to a minimum. We thank you for this city council, the leaders that we have. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, because we know that all things come from you. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, we're starting a brand-new year with brand-new personnel. And we just ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you give wisdom, guidance, and be with them throughout this year. We pray, Heavenly Father Jesus, for the citizens of Riverbank, each one of them, Heavenly Father, we lift them up to you. We ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you provide for them, take care of them, give them peace and reassurance. We just ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you put a band of angels around our great city that we love and protect us. And we'll give you the praise and thanks for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please proceed. Roll call, please.
Council authority member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council authority member District 4 Darlene Barbara Martinez. Council authority member District 2 Cindy Fosse.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair LeAnn Jones Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Changes to the agenda, there will be none tonight. Conflict of interest, any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to start off with presentations. And Cindy, would you please join me? I, Cindy Fosse.
I, Cindy Fosse.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
As council member District 2.
As council member District 2.
Of the City of Riverbank.
Of the City of Riverbank.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything? Do you want to thank anyone?
Well, I just want to thank everybody that's here and everybody that voted for me.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and, okay, these are yours. This is your oath of office, and it is attested to by Annabelle, and your certificate of election.
Okay.
And thank you, and you're welcome to be up here with us for a long, long time. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments are limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Ramon Bermudez from Riverbank, California, for 22 years and then some. Want to wish you all a Happy New Year and a prosperous one. I hope to God that he gave you twice of what he gave you in 2016. Here was a song for America. It's called "America the Beautiful" by Catherine L. Bates. Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves so green, for purple mountain majesties above the fruited plain. America, America, God share his grace on thee. Un crown thy good we brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Oh, beautiful, for pilgrim feet whose stern impatience stress. Athor, oh fair, for freedom beat across the wilderness. America, America, God mend thine every flaw. Confirm thy soul in self-control, thy liberty in love. Oh, beautiful, for heroes proved in liberating strife, who more than self their country love, and mercy more than life. America, America, may God thy culture find. The all success be noblest on every gain divine. Oh, beautiful, for patriot dream that sees beyond thy years. Thy na'la vastil city's gleam, owne thee by human tears. America, America, God share his grace on thee. Un crown thy good we brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Happy New Year, America.
Before you leave, could you tell me how that relates to our jurisdiction? I'm finding a stretch on this.
It's a song of the whole country, of the United States of America, and I don't understand what you mean by...
How are we related to city council and the actions that we can take as a charter city, as a general law city? How does this relate to our council actions?
We're all Americans.
Oh, I know that.
So, it's "America the Beautiful." We're included in that. Don't exclude yourself. It's a...
Okay, thank you.
Simple song for the whole United States.
All right, thank you. I'll make you a promise. If you practice the National Anthem, you can sing it at a Memorial Day ceremony.
Ceremony. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Scott McRitchie, City of Riverbank. First of all, congratulations to Cindy. You ran a very good campaign. Unfortunately, mine wasn't quite that good. But I wish you luck, and Happy New Year to all of you, and all the best in the coming year. A couple of things. One, I've made a New Year's resolution to try to be positive instead of negative, so here we go. The Public Works Department has done a great job in going around and making sure the gutters and everything were cleaned up. This is probably the most rain we've had in a while and probably the least flooding we've had, at least in our neighborhood. My house isn't flooded, and it's great. Second thing is that the city has made sandbags available for the people. Now, it's down there by the scout hall, and there are a lot of people taking advantage of that, and I think that's a real good thing that you guys have done. The third thing is we have a Christmas tree pickup, and I put my little two-foot tree out there, and my neighbor saw it, and they put their trees, and another neighbor, and they put their trees, and so now I have a big pile of Christmas trees in front of my house. What they're trying to do is to make it easier for the city, so our neighborhood is trying to do their best to improve the city, but right now I've got a stack of these things. And I believe that's about it. So I made it through at least a week of my New Year's intention and hope to do better this coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Thank you very much. We move on to the consent calendar, consisting of Item 3A, the wave of readings. Item 3B, approval of December 13, 2016, special city council minutes. Item 3B-1, approval of December 13, 2016, city council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Item 3C, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a master agreement administering agency-state agreement for federal aid projects between the City of Riverbank and the California Department of Transportation. LRA Item 3D, authorize the executive director of the local redevelopment authority to purchase roofing and siding materials from Metal Cells Manufacturing Corporation as a result of a public procurement. Do I have any comments, or does anyone wish to pull any items? Anyone from the public wish to comment on any of the consent items? Seeing none, I bring it back to the city council for recommendation and/or action.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
I have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar.
Council authority members Fosse. Yes. Barbara Martinez. Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 4, unfinished business, consistent with Item 4-1, second reading by title only and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2017-001 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, to amend Chapter 31, City officials, of Title III, administration of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, council. The city attorney is going to address a couple of questions that we've received from both members of the public and some of the council relating to some of the job duties. The assistant city manager is going to double as, as part of her responsibilities.
Yes, thank you. And Mayor and council, as you know, we had a full presentation for reading at our last meeting, and you introduced the ordinance at that point. I know, as the city manager said, there was some question about how the initial filling of the position was conducted, and I just wanted to reiterate that we did enter into an employment agreement with Maricela Garcia, and pursuant to that agreement, she will be serving as both the assistant city manager and retaining her finance director duties, and that the only extra pay she's receiving is the differential between what she received as finance director and what the assistant city manager position called for.
And she's still maintaining the duties that she has in human resources, housing and community development with the planning, and all the other jobs that she has? Okay, so we either promote her to this, or we hire five other people. Makes sense to me? Any comment?
Failed to answer any other questions.
Okay, is there any comments or questions from the city council? Open this up to the public for comments and/or questions. I bring it back to the council for recommendation and/or action.
I'll make a motion to approve Item 4.1.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on Item 4.1.
Council members Fosse.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5, public hearings, consistent of Item 5.1, first reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance amending Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 150, Building Regulation Section 150.01 through 150.16, adoption of standard codes and adoption of reference, the 2016 edition of the California Administrative Code, California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Plumbing Code, California Electric Code, California Fire Code, California Mechanical Code, California Energy Code, California Existing Building Code, California Historical Code, and amending Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 157, Water-Efficient Landscaping and Irrigation, Section 157.01, Purpose and Intent.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The planning and building manager will be giving this report this evening.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. This is a housekeeping item that occurs about every three years. Like I said, periodic changes are made about every three years to enhance the clarity to the codes and consistency in application. The basis of the current changes are amendments to the Administrative Code in February and the 2015 model building codes. In addition, some fire code updates as well. Just a couple of examples. Administrative Code, regulations exempting school-based health centers from DSA certification probably won't apply to any of our projects. The changes are few in the Administrative Code, and only a couple will apply to our developers. The Building Code, they're changing the frequency of the core testing of main scenery walls is one example. Most of the other Building Code changes you probably won't see either. They will be addressed by developer, engineers, and architects during the review process. Same with the Plumbing Code, although more of the Plumbing Code relates to maximum water flow rates as it applied for the drought situation we've been in, and the California Green Code. So it is recommended that the city council introduce and pass the second reading, the ordinance that the mayor read, and you probably won't see any updates like this again for three more years. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but as I mentioned at the beginning, this is a housekeeping item.
I just have a question for clarification. So this is for new construction. This is not for our existing buildings that we have right now?
Well, there is an existing building code that has been adopted as well, but it really shouldn't affect anybody except for the developers that submit new housing plans this year. They know that this has been coming. For example, McCroy Wilbur, they did submit their four model homes underneath the 2013, and when they come back in about four to six months to submit for their other houses, they will have to adhere to the 2016 codes.
For the historical one, for doing building improvements, this ordinance will cover?
That's correct.
This is a public hearing. I open it up for public comments. Seeing none, public comment, I close public comments, bring it back to the city council.
I make a motion that we approve Item 5.1.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to approve Item 5.1, which is the first reading and the second.
Council members Fosse. Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6, new business, consistent with Item 6.1, consideration of city council appointments to intergovernmental boards and committees and the city council's LRA appointments to internal city committees for the year of 2017.
Thank you, Mayor. The city's participation in various intergovernmental boards and committees provides an opportunity for the city's legislative body to actively engage in discussions and decisions that affect the citizens of Riverbank. And it also gives you all the opportunity to ensure the city's best interests are taken into consideration regionally. In addition, members of the city council who also serve on the LRA Board function in a liaison role to internal city LRA committees, which provides the opportunity for members to share the perspectives and recommendations on matters to be addressed while simultaneously fostering open communication and collaboration with a diverse committee of various community member interests and expertise. One of the first orders of business each year is for the city council and LRA Board to review the prior year's board and committee list, nominate someone or volunteer an appointment, and then ratify those changes. So a number of council members have contacted me with desired changes, and some of them conflict with others, so this is sort of council's opportunity to discuss who would be best for each spot.
Okay, let's get moving. Do you have a presentation so we can sit there and, you know, and debate it?
So, would it be okay if we step through each committee?
Okay, it's in the staff report.
Yep.
There's no way we can put that up?
No.
Okay, well, that would have been good for everyone to see. Okay, no, no, I'm fine. I'm just going to pull it up. Yeah, let's share. I need glasses on this one. All right, the first one, the League of California Central Division Executive Committee. Okay, it meets periodically. Councilmember Campbell is the current member, and I'm the alternate. Is that still good with you?
Fine with me.
Okay, I might as well be the alternate since I'm doing a lot of other things with that organization.
Right.
So there is no change in that one. The League of California Cities Annual Conference will be determined in July or August. The North County Quarter Transportation Expressway Authority Board. I am the current member of the JPA with Councilmember Barbara Martinez as the alternate. Do you still want to remain on that?
Yes.
It's going to be a lot of work on this year, which is great. Okay, and I still want to be on board that. Oh, goodness, goes that way. Fighting technology. San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Special City Selection Committee. Right now, Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez is a member, and Councilmember LeAnn Jones Cruz is the alternate or vice mayor. Is that still good?
Sure.
Good for me.
Okay. Stan Cog Policy Board. Myself as the active member, and the alternate is Councilmember Cal Campbell.
I'm good with that.
Okay, good. You may have to take over a couple of them because they keep changing their standard meeting. Stanislaus Office of Emergency Services Disaster Control. Janine Tucker was on it. She's no longer there. I have an alternate, which is Councilmember Barbara Martinez. And would you like to step up to be the primary?
Yes.
Okay, I need someone to be an alternate on the OES.
I'll do that.
Okay, and that requires training, does it not?
Yes, it does.
And you've gone through the training?
Yes.
I've gone through the training. I recommend all the council members go through the training, but you're going to have to go through the training.
Yeah, I have not, so I will do that.
Okay. Workforce Development Board. Okay, this meets the first Monday of the first month of every quarter. Councilmember Campbell, you're there?
Yes.
And we do not have an alternate. The Workforce Development Board, how often has that really met?
It's met twice so far, once in November, and we just had a meeting yesterday.
That could be important coming on up in some of our endeavors that we have in other parts of the city. Would someone like to be an alternate?
Excuse me, Mayor, there is no alternate to the board. They have informed me there is no alternate position to the board. It is only one primary position.
Is that why my name is struck off? Did I get the memo?
He just did, I think.
I think I just did.
There's a little paragraph below there. Just blinks it.
Though is Stanislaus River Trail Improvement Plan Committee. The locations and times to meet or to be determined, have they met?
Not recently.
The only times I believe they met is when they were looking at everyone forming a JPA and giving Oakdale the money. Do we want to retain this? Do you want to...
You know, I was speaking with our city manager, and we'd like maybe to try one more year and try to work on the bike trail, which didn't pay off last year because we never got the budget developed that we wanted to get developed, that we could present to the other parties and see if we could get them to go with it.
Okay, with the passing of Measure L, there should be some funding coming on up. That may be, because there's going to be a pot of money for...
Sure.
Bike trails and walking trails. Okay, so you want to be the active member?
I will be, yes.
Would you like to remain as the alternate?
Yes.
All right. This is easy tonight. You guys are knowing that I'm on a time crunch tonight. Okay, City LRA Committees. Budget Advisory Committee.
I've been on that one for two years, and I think it'd be good to spread the wealth and maybe have another council member step up to the plate if they'd like to.
Okay, Councilmember Fosse, I know that you want to sit back and observe, but haven't you been chair of that a couple of times?
Once, yes.
Okay, and you've been a member for how long?
Several.
Would you like to be the city council representative?
I can do that.
Oh, very good. Friends of Jacob Myers Park, Councilmember LeAnn Jones Cruz is the current member, and Darlene, you're the alternate. Any changes to that?
Yeah, that one conflicts with another meeting that I have, and so it was very hard for me to attend those. If we could, if someone else, if you'd like to switch and I'll be the alternate, it might work a little bit better. I was not a very good liaison for that committee, sorry, Sue.
When do they meet?
As needed.
They meet, no, they don't. They meet every month. Don't let that fool you. They meet every month.
And what day is it?
It's on a Thursday. It's on a Thursday and it conflicted with another meeting that I attended, so.
Usually 5:30 on a Thursday when they meet.
I'll try it.
Okay. So we're going to switch the primary and the alternate on Friends of Jacob Myers Park.
Mayor, on the previous Budget Advisory Committee, we needed an alternate. Is there an alternate choice for Councilmember Fossey?
He's going to make everyone.
Okay.
Really? I think Richard should be the alternate. I think I heard Cal was volunteering for that.
You, Cal?
No. I didn't.
The meeting conflicts with some Stan Cog, sorry. I'm on their Board of Directors now, unfortunately.
I'll be the alternate.
Oh, very good.
Solve that problem, there we go.
Okay, Local Redevelopment Authority, LRA, Community Advisory Committee.
I would like to do that one, actually.
Okay, we have Barbara Martinez as the primary and you can be the alternate. And when they do meet, alternates are encouraged to, to observe. You do a great job at the North County Quarter. Think I saw Cal once at Stan Cog.
I've been there more than that.
Sister City Committee. We have the primary as Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez and the alternate as Leann Jones Cruz. You want to remain on that?
I will. We're still trying to get them together.
Yeah. And that's, oops, wait a minute. Budget Advisory.
I'll be the alternate then.
That's it? So we have those set. I'm sorry we didn't have graphics or visuals for the community, but is there anyone from the community wishes to comment on any of those?
Ramon Tranquilabres, wanted to ask you when and if they're going to put a committee for the elderly?
For the elderly in what manner?
In the manner of getting organized and say we in touch with the St. Ello's County Office of the Elderly for the meetings, somebody that can go and updating the ones that come for the three meals a week, well, four actually, that's included on the elderly, the community center.
That's not one of our, that's not one of our committees, but we can look at someone liaising with the county.
And I will, I'll be happy to do that.
Appreciate that.
Will you already doing that?
Yeah, I know, but he's talking about a different group, so I'll contact them.
Okay, we'll have to take a look at the, the committee and then bringing that into a formal representation.
In order for us a little bit more.
Yeah, but we can't make that decision here today because that's not part of our formal committees that we have.
Understand. Hasn't been for a long time. It's about time we get it started. Thank you very much.
I bring, any other further comments from the public? I bring it back for the City Council to consider the, the appointments and new appointments.
We need to make a motion to consider it or are we just considering it?
By roll call vote, we have to ratify the appointments.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we consider Item 6.1.
I second it.
We have a recommendation and a second to by roll call vote, ratify the appointments for the year 2017.
Councilmembers Fossey.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7, Comments and Reports. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, just wanted to thank the council staff and the community for a very warm welcome. Six days in, still meeting with folks and getting up to speed on projects. The, a couple of council members have asked that I do a meet and greet before next meeting, so we're going to set that up for, before the next council meeting at 5:00, from 5 to 6:00, we'll have some refreshments. So anybody from the community that hasn't got a chance, come down and we could chat. And then last item this evening is the Measure L. Citizen Advisory Committee is, is getting ramped up and is starting to look for representatives from each of the nine jurisdictions in Stanislaus County. We are putting together an application form for citizens who are interested and we'll have that online and available here at City Hall for folks that might be interested so council can consider an appointment. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, for Measure L, please coordinate with Stan Cog on the application process. Make sure that the parameters are clearly understood. For example, it has to be a resident of the City of Riverbank, has to be articulate in the transportation needs and I want that individual that we finally, it has to go through a selection process and I do the vetting and then, then we bring it to the council. But I want them to fully understand our transportation requirements. Then lastly, how the Measure L monies are to be received and dispersed. Those are requirements that if we put that on the application process, that'll give us some understanding that they, they know the Measure L. Please. Okay, Council Authority Members. Councilmember Fossey?
Nothing.
Okay, Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Just a couple of items. I was appointed by the President of the League of California Cities to serve on the statewide Community Policy Committee again and I gladly accepted that appointment. And just a reminder, please do not drive in the roadways that are really flooded because it is very dangerous. And if you see that there are drains that are clogged up, you know, give the city a call so they can come in and take care of it for us. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Like Councilmember Martinez, I was appointed by the League of Cities to a committee for the Employee Relations and Policy for this next year and I'll be serving and attending meetings for that. And the only other thing I would like to remind people of, it's wet out there. Pay a little bit more attention to your driving because it's very easy to get in an accident with these slick roads.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
I just wanted to welcome everybody and wish them a Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to 2017. Wanted to also welcome our new city manager, Sean Scully, and our newly appointed council member, Ms. Fossey. Welcome, you guys. It's nice to have you here and I'm looking forward to 2017 and all that it has to bring.
Thank you.
Also, I wanted to put more coin. Don't forget the Citizen of the Year Dinner Awards. It'll be January 28th at 6:00 PM, I believe, is the time that I have on my calendar. So put that on your calendars. Thank you.
Okay, I'm done now.
Okay, thank you. And I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Started off great already. I'd like to welcome the City Manager, Sean Scully, and Cindy Fossey, Councilmember. Welcome and actually thank you for your service. I want to remind everyone, we are a hero city. That means that if you have some energy efficiencies that you want to gain in your home or you want to gain some water efficiencies, there, it's a program that you can apply for the funding and you pay it back in your, with your property taxes over a period of 20 years. You can do landscape, drought landscape for, you know, going to drip systems. They will help you pay for it and again, that goes over your property taxes over a 20-year period. If you should happen to sell your home, that is transferred to the new owners. For example, if you're waiting for hot water, a lot of time that goes down the drain, you could have instant hot water and you're not going to waste that water. Those are programs that is available through this city and we are a hero city. Measure L was passed. The city manager mentioned that we're looking for applicants. The Stan Cog has not yet approved the process, but they, that will happen at the end of this month. And so we have to be in lockstep with that process and the application process. Measure L is a, will be a bonus for a lot of our roads that have been mentioned that needs to be fixed on a priority basis and we'll have funding available to where we can now do the roads that we need and do the ADA improvements. So I look forward to a decent execution of our plan at the end of this calendar year. I had one other thing which is now lost on me because I didn't bring my blue book and that's my brain. With that, the next City Council meeting is on January 24th. This meeting is now concluded. Adjourned.